Call to meeting order, please. Call roll.
Ms. Skahoon?
Here.
Ms. Collins?
Please, sir.
Dr. McFadden?
Here.
Mrs. O'Neil? Mr. Rickman?
Here.
Mr. Walker?
Here.
Mrs. Walker?
Here.
Forum has been established. Next on the agenda, a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda, citizens comments. This is a portion of the meeting where you, the citizens, can address the board within your questions, comments, concerns. We ask that you come to the microphone, state your name and address. I'll be mindful, you have three minutes by which to make your inquiries. Also, you may not receive a response to your particular inquiries here this evening. Last but not least, I ask that you address all questions, comments, concerns to the chair. The agenda is now open for citizens comments.
Good evening, Board. Patrick Leonardbury, 155 Cass Avenue, Chairman of the Mount Clement Santa Parade. And for this year, we are doing a stocking stuffer raffle to raise money for the parade. We are selling $200, $100 raffle tickets. We have less than 30 left. The winner will get $10,000. And of course, the money goes to the Santa Parade, which of course is for the children. So if you're interested in getting a ticket, please get ahold of me. I still have a small stash myself. The drawing's maybe next Thursday night at the Rec Bowl. We're doing a Christmas in July party. I gave you a flyer. You do not have to have a raffle ticket to come to the party. We'll have gift baskets you guys can bid on, drink specials and food specials and all kinds of fun stuff. We have live entertainment, spooky Sterling Band. It'll be a really fun time. And again, we're raising money for the Santa Parade. If you're interested in buying tickets or going in a group package on tickets, you can split one. Come see me whenever you have time. And I take electronic payment to it, it doesn't have to be cash. All right? All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm Laquisha Davis, 7-0 Mulligan Drive. I just want to address a couple of issues. I'm a parent, of course, for Seminole Academy. I just wanted to say that I'm glad Ms. Bethel got her position back as principal. And I also want to say that these students should be able to wear uniforms. I feel like no kid should be going to school wearing graphic t-shirts and jeans. And all this stuff between kids is getting riled up, as in who got the better shoes, who's got the better clothes. I just feel like kids need, you know, structure. And I feel like when we have that, kids can be able to, you know, talk amongst each other, you know, have a free place, a safe space for them to feel comfortable, you know? And I just feel like they should be able to wear solid colors and solid shoes. And that's all, that's pretty much it. I just feel like they should just wear uniforms. I also feel like, you know, a lot of parents, I watched the board meeting last month and they was talking about parents being, you know, assistants and parents can afford stuff for their kids. And I just feel like when you have uniforms, they can just get up, wash and go, instead of us coming out our pockets all the time to buy clothes and shoes back after back. We don't have the money for that. And I also feel like we should also have latchkey. I get up at 6:30 in the morning, I have to be to work at 8:00. You know, I have to call people to come and get my kids. And my son is starting school this year. So I'm like, okay, well, who's going to get up in the morning and watch our kids? I have to get up, get them dressed and make sure they're on time. How come nobody else can't do it? So I just really, you know, I just really pray that you guys reconsider for these kids to wear uniforms so they don't have to have all this confusion going on in these fights. Because it has been a few fights this year about clothing and shoes and stuff like that. And they shouldn't have to go through that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am.
Nelson Jackson, 615 Wellington Crescent. Want to give the board a compliment tonight, which is somewhat unusual for me at this point. But want to draw your attention to your quick response to the overgrowth east end of this building with trees. That's been taken care of, it looks a lot better. Over at Seminole where the tennis courts are, they've taken care of the overgrowth with the weeds. But that job has not been completed because the parking lot is overgrown with weeds. And the entrance to the building has weeds growing in the sidewalk. And that's not a good look if we're trying to increase the enrollment and the public is coming up. It's not a good look, particularly when right next door is Clinton View, Clinton Valley, Triple Y Valley. So if you give that some attention, you'll get another compliment.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Second call, citizens comments.
Hello. Edry Mann, 346 Huntington, Mount Clements. First of all, I'd like to say I'm sorry, I always dip in and make my comments and head back out. But I'm a single mom, I only have a sitter for a few minutes. And this is really important to me so far. I didn't hear that Ms. Bethel got her job back. Is that true? Does anybody know if that's true? If it is, but I'm happy to hear that. Tonight, I'm here to talk about Mr. Andre Fullwood. As a single mom, I think I've shared before, both of my children have an autoimmune issue. My daughter's doing much better. But with this situation, their immune system, when they get sick, instead of getting sick like a regular kid, their immune system will redirect and attack their brain. So my daughter's been much better, hasn't had problems in about a year and a half. My son is coming along this year. He had a few bumps. It can present as behavioral issues, okay? Anger, aggression, rage, not being able to sit down in his class. When he's not having a flare, he's a straight A student, the class helper, the most loving child in the world. My experience with schools previously have been, he's a bad kid. Once something happens, he's a bad kid. You know, oh, there's no such thing as this, like doctor's notes, you know, all of this stuff. No, they never cared. The very first time something happened with my child, Mr. Fullwood was there. Not only was he there, he listened, he believed me, he has supported us. This was the very first year my child has made it through an entire year with a handful of little baby bumps. And he was there to hold his hand through it. He has stood by, he has become a friend. Every single morning when I pull up, I watch kids hug him, love on him. I watch him play with the kids. He's not in this to get rich. And in Seminole Academy, we need men to represent for these children. We need men in positions of helping and loving and caring about our children. We need our daughters to see him, we need our sons to see him. I have never heard another parent have a bad word to say. He is the only person who's been laid off under weird circumstances, whatever it was. I'm asking you as a parent to please keep Mr. Fullwood on. He means everything to that school. I mean, I see his heart every single day. I can text him right now, right now, in the middle of July, and say, Mr. Fullwood, something blah, 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 and he'll be there. And I know I'm not the only one. I'm nobody special. He loves these kids and he does a good job. Every time my son's had a bump, even in the middle of a flare, which isn't even behavioral, it's just the way it's presenting, he'll work with him and he comes away and he's better and he's okay and he's calm. And he goes back to class and things are good. So I just want to speak on behalf of Mr. Fullwood and ask you to please, on behalf of parents, consider keeping him with us.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Last call, citizens comments. Hearing or seeing none?
I'd like to put a motion on the floor to add an item.
We've got time for that, we can do that.
But we're starting the consent agenda, so I want to add it as an item on the agenda.
Okay, what's your item now?
Okay, I would like to add an item to discuss adding an item to all future agendas for responses of public comment questions. So basically, an item that we respond to previous questions at previous board meetings, regular board meetings.
That's, if I'm not mistaken, that's in the policy.
For policy for what?
For response from questions asked at the board meeting. If the questions are in writing, that we respond to them. I believe that they're somewhere in the policy.
Do we have that policy up? Can we verify that that is indeed a policy?
And if it is, it would have to be a policy. We'd have to make it a policy. If it's not, I know there was a period, there was a time, I've been on here for a long time, there was a period of time, that there was a time period when we had questions, written out questions, they got a written response from the superintendent.
Okay, but I'm saying that the board addresses, because when...
The board can't address some of the questions that the citizens ask.
Why can't they?
Because we're not the administration.
But they're presenting to the board, aren't they?
I understand, I understand.
So why wouldn't the board be able to address them?
We can talk about, you know? So you requested to amend the agenda and...
Yep, and just add an action item. And we can add it after item six before we get to the informational items.
So what? State your amendment to the...
And the motion would be to discuss the discussion of adding an item to all future agendas for responses of public comment questions. Now, public comment questions. And I understand that this may be something that's relative to a policy, but I think some sort of discussion is warranted. I know that another, that the Mount Clements or the city commission has this on their agenda. So I don't think it's out of the run possibility that we could put something like that on here.
It's been moved to amend the agenda to add a discussion, item discussed, response to public comments. Is there a second to the request to amend the agenda, to add to the agenda discussion regarding response to public comments? Is there a second? Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of second. Moving the agenda forward, next on the agenda, item five, consent agenda. Under consent agenda five, eight, approval of the minutes, one, of the June 21st, 23 public hearing, public hearing on proposed budget 2023, 2024. Item two, June 21st, 23, approval of the regular minutes. Item three, approval of the minutes from the June 27th, 2023, special meeting. Item four, approval of the minutes from the July 13th, 2023 Committee of the Whole Work Session. Item B, 5B, approval of bills for payments. The chair would entertain a motion relative to the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Jay Walker to approve the consent agenda, seconded by Dee Walker. Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda? Hearing or seeing none, call the roll, please.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Skahoon?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neil? Mr. Rickman?
Yes. Motion carries. Next on the agenda, item six, access control purchases. The chair would entertain a motion relative to the access control purchases.
So moved.
Moved by Member Walker.
Support.
Second, Member Walker. Any questions, comments on the motion on the floor? This is the same we were talking about at the work session. The, this was a grant, I think, in the neighborhood of $88,000 or something that we talked about.
Yes, 97 safety grant. And it's for access control security, for security doors and server.
Are there any questions regarding the motion on the floor to purchase of the access control purchases as we discussed at the work session on last Thursday?
Was there any research done on contacting the chair to see if there was any other grants available? Because I know that Jamie had discussed that at the last meeting.
Superintendent has to respond to that.
So at the workshop meeting, Ms. Collins brought that, Ms. Collins brought that up. And we have been doing some research, trying to get in touch with Sergeant...
O'Brien.
O'Brien. We haven't received a call back from him yet, but we are looking into that. As well as the, what they've done down on the river to keep the geese away.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Hearing or seeing none, call the roll, please.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Skahoon?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes. Motion carries. The superintendent has requested to amend the agenda to add to the agenda. Recommendation is coming out of the Finance Committee regarding the student recruitment campaign. The chair would entertain a motion to amend the agenda to add to the agenda discussion of the student recruitment campaign.
So moved.
Moved by Member Walker.
Support.
Second, Member Walker to amend the agenda to add to the agenda, student recruitment campaign discussion. Any questions, comments on the motion on the floor to amend the agenda? Hearing or seeing none, call the roll, please.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Skahoon?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neil? Mr. Rickman?
Yes. Motion carries. We'll add it right now because we're still in the end of the action items, Mr. Superintendent.
Yep. Thank you. Good evening, good evening, everyone, community. We added this, as everyone knows, we've been hearing us talk about enrollment and the importance of getting students back into our district. And as the team that has been working on our recruitment initiative and plan realized today that one of the strategies we want to use is a radio campaign with FM 98 WJLB. And we want to start it next week before the end of this month. We're already behind from a recruitment perspective. And we realize that we can't wait until next month's board meeting to get this going. So the, you have in front of you the attachment of the services that will be provided. Again, it's on FM 98 double J L B. It's a five-week campaign. Our ads will be ran, that includes me going into the studio recording time, studio time, and our ads being ran. And you can see on that second sheet there, or third sheet, the spots that would be ran, 140 time, 30-second spots, primetime commercials, 50 30-second bonus rotator commercials and 45-second bonus mentions, as well as the ads will be streamed on streaming devices as well. And this is just one initiative that we are, that we want to undertake for our recruitment campaign in addition to our, the other things you will hear about later on, and I guess in my comments, from our door-to-door piece and our social media initiatives as well.
Chair would entertain a motion relative to the, excuse me, student enrollment campaign as expressed and explained by the superintendent.
So moved.
Moved by Member Walker.
Support.
Second, Member Walker. Any questions, comments on the motion on the floor? I just have a question. Who is our target audience? Because I don't know how many people listen to WJLB. And how do, you know, I think J L B is what, the largest radio station in Detroit? And it has a huge bandwidth outreach.
Yep.
Who are you, in terms of utilizing that portion for recruitment? Who do we believe would be our target audience with that?
So the age group, the target audience would be from ages 18 to 49. So 18-year-olds to our 49-year-olds is the target audience. The company that is going to help facilitate this is, has experience in working in other school districts, helping them with their enrollment campaigns and initiatives and has had some success with, with multiple forms of marketing. And this has been one of the, with the timeline that we have, right, we're behind the eight bar right now. This is the, what they call a call to action campaign. I know, I was in a meeting last night and I even see one every day driving here in the billboards. People say, oh, there's a billboard with another school's information on it, which makes me feel some type of way personally. But anyway, I asked about that as well, and that is really a least effective marketing campaign, according to their data and research. That is more for branding, is how it was presented to me. So you have two types of marketing campaigns. One is a call to action, and that is what we need, and the other is a branding. So this is a call to action. Our target audience is 18 to 49 with WJLB, which is the, as you said, the largest, the largest radio station in metro Detroit that reaches the demographic that we are trying to reach.
Did they have any data on the success that customer A using that strategy?
Yeah.
And did they have any data to say how that actually increased their enrollment?
Yep, so I can get, I can get their actual, the impact data from their initiative when they've done this in other school districts. But in conversation with some other superintendents that they have worked with, it has been significant contributing, a contributing factor to their enrollment. I'll just say this, for the record, in the past, we, the company that we were, that we used for some of the marketing, one of the, one of the things were, ads were, was on a country station. And I don't know if that really is targeting the demographic that we are serving and trying to serve. And so, and we know what the enrollment, the impact of that has not been. And so, that's where we are.
Thank you.
I have a question. So based on that demographic?
Yep.
It is, I mean, I personally don't listen to the radio. So I'm not sure that that is a good spend. I think the majority of the people, if I'm not mistaken, are on social media. So I'm just wondering if a better spend of money might be an ad spend on social media.
Yep, I'm glad you brought that up. So there's a, none of, there's no one thing. This is just, I was going to talk about that in my report later, but this is just one of many facets. So we're going to have this, we're going to have a social media campaign with some of our students in it, and that's going to be done in-house. So we're going to be able to save a lot of costs with our production. And Patrick there, who is recording our meetings and his team and students are going to help with that social media blasting campaign, as well as our door-to-door initiative and our community recruitment initiative as well. So that radio piece is just one aspect of it, no one thing is going to, is going to get it done. So we need to hit different audiences, audiences different ways.
Okay, and then what is your branding that you're putting forth in these commercials? What is, and do you already have that brand set up to go from not only these commercials, but on all the other facets that you're going to do?
So I, if you recall, I said this the other night, and it's something that I, that just came to my heart. And in our office, we have been talking about this, and everywhere I've gone, I've been talking about that branding slogan mindset is going to be a new standard of excellence.
Mm-hmm.
And that's what is, what we're going to communicate through the things we do, how we operate. But that is going to be our push.
Okay, and you already have what you're going to say in all of these different facets?
So with this, there's a couple of things. So we're going to do, it's going to be a production. So with the radio, I'll literally have to go, they'll work with me and whoever our team is in the studio to come up with a commercial ad, that this is what they do. And in-house, our students and Patrick will come up with that. We have a team in-house that's going to, you know, use our students to do some testimonials, like some real-life, relevant feedback. So really won't be maybe too scripted, but guided when we're using our student piece in-house, because we want it to be natural and we want it to be real, so.
And is this, so this is going to run at the end of the month? Is this going to run in conjunction?
With the other things.
With the other things?
Absolutely.
Like literally on that same timeframe?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yep, for sure.
All right.
Any additional questions, comments or concerns? I'm seeing that this particular initiative is about $20,000, I think. I think last year, help me out, I think the budget for marketing was a neighborhood of $70,000 or something like that.
It was, yes. With the whole package initiative that we want to do, because there's still some aspects of the former company that we use, that we still want to, some good things that they had too, we're going to, you know, combine different. Jen and I have met, our plan is to, goal is to at least cut that number from last year and a half, is our target. Now, let's be clear, if we increase enrollment, it pays for itself, right? Two kids is $20,000, or $19,000, what is it, 19 what? Something like that. Anyway, so...
Don't know what kind of kid it is.
Yep.
Thank you.
No problem.
Any additional questions, comments, concerns? Hearing or seeing none, call the roll, please.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Skahoon?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes. Motion carries. Next on the agenda, informational items, item seven, business and finance, eight, June financial reports. Questions regarding the June financial reports?
So was this the list of items that we saw the last time and we had questions about the book titles? So I have a, I just received the book titles this evening and I, I need to investigate it more, so I'm going to vote based on that, so.
This is just an informational item, there's no vote on this.
Okay, I thought there was a motion to vote on approving it.
No, this is, this is under informational.
Okay.
The book purchase was already approved. The books, that purchase had been approved, I think, a while back. And it was just, just getting the books out, I'm trying, you know, because like, you know...
So the books were already approved?
Yeah.
March.
In March?
Last year.
So, okay, so then we, okay, we need to address, you know, questioning them before, before they get purchased. So, okay.
Any additional questions on the June financial report? B, contract listing. Any questions regarding the contract listing? I know that's something you're still updating, if I understand it correctly.
Yes.
Item nine, facilities discussion. We had talked about at the Thursday work session, trying to get a time for Partners and Architect. I was in, received an email from Partners and Architect and they had July the 25th, 25th, ah, shoot, help me out, Mr. Roll, because I can't. July the twenty-fifth, twenty-seventh, August the first, August the second, I, I believe. And they, when they're, the initial, I'll try to find that email. It's hard for me to get.
July twenty-fifth or thirty-first, August first or second?
So, July twenty-fifth.
Or, or the thirty-first?
Thirty-first.
Or August first?
August fourth.
Or August second?
The second. Okay. When they originally sent the email, they were saying they were available anytime after nine-thirty. And I share with them that many of the board members work. For the board members, the evening would be a, a better date, a better time for, for many of us. And so, they went back and stayed on, on those dates that they would be available for an evening meeting. That would be July twenty-fifth, July thirty-first, August first, August second. So, my feedback from the board members regarding availability for have that work session with Partners and Architect to go over with the board the plans that we currently have for capital improvement at our facilities and other plans that we have for our facilities that we don't have any money to do any capital improvement at. It's an overall condition of, of our facilities and how we recommend moving forward to upgrade our facilities. So, those are the four dates that they provided. July twenty-fifth, July thirty-first, August the first, and August the second. I started off, August the first is a bad, bad day for me. All other three days, I can, I can make it possible for a six-thirty meeting. July, I mean, August the first, I'm already committed.
Did you say good for any day by August first?
Yeah, I am, yes.
Okay.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
I can't do the twenty-fifth.
I like the thirty-first. Do you?
I'm good on the thirty-first.
I have a commitment to first of August. The second and thirty-first, I'm okay with either one.
Somebody move it. I heard third people. Third people said they're available on the thirty-first.
Thirty-first.
Put it on it.
Yeah, I just couldn't do the twenty-fifth.
Okay. I make a motion to have our meeting with Partners and Architecture on Monday, July thirty-first, six-thirty, here in the Media Center.
Support.
Move by Member Walker to have the work session with Partners and Architect on July thirty-first, six-thirty, in the Media Center. It was seconded by Member D. Walker. Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor?
And they'll have a, an agenda or we will?
They'll have a presentation.
They'll have presentation?
Yes. A big presentation.
And is, is this an open meeting then?
All of our meetings are open.
Okay. I just ask you.
Yeah, all of our, we, we, all of our meetings are open.
There's new people here, so I want to make them aware.
All of our meetings are open meetings. And all work sessions are open sessions. Any additional questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor to have July thirty-first, six-thirty P.M. For the work session with Partners and Architect in this meeting, in this center, in this room? Hearing is saying none. Call Roper, please.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahoon?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes. Motion carries. Let's see. Next, item eight, superintendent evaluation instrument discussion. We provided the, the instrument for the evaluation of the superintendent at the, prior to the work session on Thursday. Are there any questions, comments, concerns regarding that instrument?
Is there a way that we could contact other districts to see what they are using for their superintendent evaluation?
Yes, ma'am, yeah.
Yeah.
My information that I got from the ISD, ninety-nine percent of the districts in, in Macomb County use that specific superintendent evaluation instrument.
I, I would still like to see what they have in terms of like, questions they've asked and, and how they've changed it. Because I don't think, I think this is just like a template, right?
No.
So, this is what they use?
That's the instrument.
And they don't modify it in any way, shape, or form?
No, ma'am.
I'd still like to investigate what they have and see what they have in terms of their superintendent evaluation. To see what, you know, have they changed it? Have they not changed it? Things like that.
Well, it has to be approved by the Michigan Department of Education. That's why I say it's not, it's not a template. It's not, you know, a model. That, that the instrument you use has to be approved by the Michigan Department of Education. So, if there's any changes to it, they would have to been approved by the Michigan Department of Education.
Okay.
The instrument as it is right now has been approved by the M.D.A. That's just, you know, FYI for you.
To help your investigation, I would recommend or suggest, maybe you should call the ISD. Does all of them fall into ISD? Ask them what templates they use, what schools don't use it. I think only three or four schools in the, under ISD do not use this model.
Okay.
That will help your search.
Yeah.
It will go a little faster. And go ahead and contact them.
If I could add something?
Sure.
The, David and I have done a little research. And so, to align, one of the things that has been standing out in my short tenure so far is, is just aligning processes and things. We plan on adopting the same tool for principal evaluations, which will align with the superintendency evaluation, which will bring some consistency and some coherence to everything that we do. So, just for what it's worth.
Any additional questions or comments? The next time we meet, we'll, I'll be seeking, trying to establish a meeting date to be able to go over that, to, to have a session, to be trained on, on the instrument, if that's the will of the board at that time, not right now. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing is saying none. Takes us to item ten, superintendents' comments. Mr. Superintendent?
All right. Good evening again. I'm going to start off by, this is my first full, first board meeting on this side of the table, other than the workshop. So, I'll say what I've been saying a, a lot. I'm still excited, as I was before I got here. Just know that. It's been very, very busy and, and good work being done. So, I am, again, still appreciative for being here. I want to start off, you are going to hear me talk about this until I'm probably blue in the face. Enrollment, enrollment, enrollment. And I think that's no secret. Our enrollment has declined for a number of years consistently. We're trending in the wrong direction as far as enrollment. And we have talked about staffing. We've talked around staffing. We've had a staffing meeting in Central Office today. And the reality of it is, I think you said it best, Mr. Rickman, at our workshop, there's some rightsizing that's going to have to happen. And in my personal opinion and assessment of what has been going on, it seems like it's just been pushed down the line a little bit. But, I'm left with it. And so, it has to be dealt with. We have met as a team to try to look at the things we can do to, to secure our human resources. We need, we need people, but we have to have students in order to, to pay salaries and keep buildings open and, and do the things that we like to do. So, just know that the team is, is analyzing our, our staff and potentially looking at where we can make some adjustments to, to be healthy financially. Ideally, the goal is to increase this enrollment, so we don't have to do that. But, the sad reality of it is, is if that doesn't happen, things will change. And I hate to be the bearer of that bad news, but that's what you brought me here to do, to be honest. But, we're going to do it. And we're going to get kids in here. And we're going to create a product that is competitive, that is valuable for, for this community. And we're going to put the work in to, to see it through. How can we do that? We've talked about it already, our marketing campaign and our recruitment campaign. We've already talked about the radio piece, starting as soon as the thirty-first. The door-to-door campaign. We have been talking to some community members, as well as pulling data to find out where our students are. The first initiative is, we want to get our students that, we want to get our kids back. And that's going to be the conversation. We want our kids back. And I'm going to ask families and myself to give me a chance, give us a chance, out of having our kids back. So, our door-to-door campaign is going to target those communities that we have school-age students that don't attend our district. And we are, our team is, we're putting together our team. There's something that's going to go out to all staff, because we need all hands on deck. This is all of our business. And where staff can sign up and, and we can have different teams going out to help support the initiative and doing different things. Community events, we've been able to pull up the, the city calendar. We're going to talk to, I've been in conversation with Pastor Larry, who's connected in the, with the ministerial alliance. And he has some connections out there that is going to get me in front of some communities and some people to, to talk about us and what we have to offer and recruit our, our families back. Community events, we have the city calendar. There are a lot of things that are going on in the city. We got some okay from the city to, to set up shop, have tables at, pass out literature, and recruit and touch families personally. And that's the way I think it's going to get done. As you all know, once we do the work, word of mouth will be the number-one recruiter, in my experience, from starting a school from no students to working in Detroit Public Schools and having some success and, as well as in Centerline. Word of mouth is the number-one recruiting tool that you can have. But, we got to make sure we are providing and offering a, a product that we can stand behind. And, and that's what we're going to do. Again, I talked about Patrick. We met today. He's going to work with the, some students in his team to have a student-led initiative that is going to put together some marketing promotional things that we can blast out on all social media outlets. The community roundtables, discussions, as, as you all know, has been a part of my plan, my entry plan. Board Member Walker over here and I had a meeting. And he suggested that we start with kids and I thought it was, or the youth. And I thought that that was a, a great idea. So, next Monday. So, that means I don't see any youth in here, ages. Okay, we got a couple. You're invited. Okay, Carol. All right, now. I'm not going to get in trouble. So, if you show up, we'll figure it out. But, we are targeting current stu-, current students to recently, recent graduates. I want to hear from them first. I want to hear from their experiences. I want to learn from their experiences and what they think. We know what we think as the adults, but oftentimes, their voice gets lost. So, we're going to be in this room next Friday the twenty-eighth at five P.M. So, tell your kids. I've been very busy. Some of the things I've been doing, I just want to give an update on some of the things we've been looking at, processes, procedures, right? Making sure those things are in place, making adjustments to processes and procedures, gathering information. I have to, I've had to act a little more, a little more boldly than I thought I was going to be able to act in my initial presentation and interviews. I, I don't have time to wait. We, we, we don't have time to, I didn't have the first thirty days just to watch and observe. So, I had to move right now. And that's where we are. And that is the, the sense of urgency that we are all operating with. And, and it's been a pleasure working with the team in, in Central Office, because they are, have gotten right next to me. And, and we're, and we're moving forward and making adjustments as we go. Just a little update on academics. I don't know if David's going to touch on this, but he, he's had a meeting with, exploring the SEMCA construction class for the high school. And we're also looking at some middle school career options as well. I don't know if you want to talk about the SEMCA thing or say how that meeting went? Or, I know we want to get them in front of the board to present.
So, we, we met with a representative from SEMCA today and Sarah Stroback, the ISD consultant, who's been working with us to build that partnership. SEMCA would not serve as a vendor, but more as an articulation partner and helping with coordinating services and materials. They would help us to organize the OSHA-ten certifications for our students and then to provide opportunities for students to work at their facility or to learn in their facility, and also to build partnerships throughout our community. So, we're actually taking a small team on a tour over the next two weeks. And we look forward to bringing that, those course proposals to the August board meeting.
Thank you. Partners in Architecture, we have already talked about that. I've also met, met with Partners in Architecture in our workshop. We talked about the work that's potentially being, going to be done at Seminole. I was brought up to speed on those proposals and got some information on those. I think Board Member Walker and Ms. Cahoon, you asked for some things. See me after the meeting, I might have some information. I know you weren't at the initial meeting that the rest of the board members may have had. I got some information for you. And we've, we've learned, learned about the, the options and plans for the work to be done at Seminole, some things that need some, some immediate action, some, some TLC in addition to the weeds out front that have been noted. We, we got some other things, concrete work, some, some work that is significant in total, but some things we need to take care of now, so our buildings don't, don't crumble. It's a beautiful building over there, so. And just some general updates, just something small for whatever it's worth. I don't know if you saw, it's posted, that we're seeking a basketball coach. So, that job is out there, it's posted online, if you know of anyone that is interested in, in coming here and, and help be a part of something special. It's open. And also, there's a very youthful person in the room that came to me last night that's, that has offered to volunteer to run our concession stands at our football games. It's been my understanding that in the past, we have not generated any revenue from concessions at football games. That has gone back into the program. And as a former athletic director, that is like the number-one resource for, for generating rev-, you know, funds that, for athletics. Athletics is usually cut short all the time. And so, concession stands is, does a hu-, has a huge impact on sustaining and, and adding value to the resources for our kids. So, we're looking forward to seeing what the impact has. But, but that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you.
Brings us to item eleven, board comments. Mrs. O'Neil?
Okay. Let's do right mine. Where do I start? Mr. Roper, thank you so much for listening to us. In the beginning, how we said as a board that our district needed a standard. And I love the new standard of excellence. And thank you so much for listening to us. We have already had some honest and difficult conversations, which was necessary. And I, I, again, I thank you for that. We talked about decisions that were dropped in your lap that I didn't agree with. And you assured me that you were going to make everybody in our district accountable. And with that said, I support you in your decisions that you made, because I do believe that everybody need to be made accountable in, in this district, because our children need it, our babies need it. They need everything that we can give them. Of course, the meeting that we attended last night, it was very brutal, as you know. But, many people had come to me after the meeting to talk. And like I, like I told them, you just have to be careful of the things that you hear, the emails that they receive, because of course, I say it all the time, there's three sides to every story. My perspective that I give you, it could be true. But, when My perspective that I give you, it could be true, but when you dig deep, some things may not be all true. But with that said, to our teachers that are questioning, coming back, I plead with you, I ask you to please reconsider. Mr. Roper, your door is always open. Please hear his side. I think you're, he will ease your heart. So I do ask you all to talk to him. And I think we are going in the right direction. I am looking for some great things to happen. However, I can assist in any of this that goes on in the district, please let me know. I will be there to support. And yeah, I think that's my comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Kahoon.
Welcome, Mr. Roper. I didn't vote for you, and as we've had discussions, I take accountability for that. And I'm excited, after our discussions, to see what you're gonna do with the district. You have great vision, and I hope that the word accountability really becomes something that you hold true to, because that is so much needed. I'm just gonna read what I had written. So I wanted to address something that was brought up at the previous board meeting by Ms. Jackson. She had brought to the board's attention a letter that was sent to an administrator. And the letter, it stated that the board had decided to not do something. What I am commenting about has to do with the fact that the letter acknowledges the board decided, when in fact, the board didn't decide or meet to make a decision as stated in the letter. In fact, from my knowledge, no other board member received a copy of said letter. The only time that knowledge of the letter existed came to light was when Mr. and Mrs. Jackson brought it to my attention while we were on a phone call. I told Mr. and Mrs. Jackson to bring it to the board's attention, and to bring it to the board's meeting, and to give each board member a copy. There has been a board member who stated to me that the time of discussion of this letter has done and passed. I disagree with this comment, and the reason is, the letter was brought out in a public comment. Because it is out in public, there now needs to be accountability, again, there's that word accountability, to respond to the letter. In fact, the meeting I went to last night, where people were discussing problems with the district, one of the problems is accountability. So I am making a public statement, telling the public that I did not know about the letter prior to seeing it from Mr. and Mrs. Jackson. In my opinion, the last thing we should be doing now is to not ask for accountability about why the person who signed the letter didn't, one, notify the rest of the board within the almost 30 days they had to give the letter to the other board members, and two, why did this person sign the letter knowing that the board, in fact, didn't agree or meet to vote to agree on a decision? I hope that the person who did this will take accountability that they need to take in order to build trust, back trust, to not only other board members, but to the residents and district. We are trying to teach our children to be accountable for their actions. How can we do this if we, as adults, don't lead by example? I was voted onto this board by the voters of Mount Clemens. Every elected official should be taking, talking to residents of the city who are their constituents. The biggest mistake we could make is to stop listening to the people within the city. I am one of seven board members, and I bring to the table my own views, experiences, knowledge, and discernment about the things that are discussed. In my 53 years on this earth, I have learned a lot, and the greatest thing I learned is to not assume. I learned to gather as much information as I can, and to discern what the truth is based on my research. The full truth is never on the right or the left, but somewhere in the middle, as also Board Trustee Stephanie has stated. When you take away option, opinion, when you take away opinions and emotion and look at the facts, especially when you aren't in the middle of it, you can see there is more to the story, or there are other issues that people didn't realize. I may not see eye to eye on everything with every person, but as another board member had stated to me, we will most likely agree on way more than what we don't agree on, especially when it comes to the children of this district. We have to show children by our actions how respect is given, how grace is shown, and that in 95% of the situations, people truly have good intentions. A lot of times, mistakes are made either from a lack of knowledge, education, or guidance. My intention as a board member is to do the best job possible for the current and future generations of children in this district, as if they were my own child. I have continued to state that these policies and procedure problems within the district, and continue to say it. Another board member has previously stated that we have policies and procedures, and that an ex-board member did an amazing job with the policies and procedures. And I acknowledge, yes, sir, he did. I will rephrase what I mean. We do have policies and procedures, however, we have a lack of following, a lack of following and accountability to those policies and procedures, which I know that Mr. Roper will be addressing in this coming year. When policies and procedures are being followed, there is little room for chaos. When you have a good leader implementing and holding accountability faculty, employees, administration to those policies and procedures, then you will have a well-run school or a business. When you have a board holding the superintendent accountable and being transparent, then you have very little chaos. My goal is to always listen to residents of the district, especially if those residents have lived here for as long, for a very long time, and especially if the residents or the public worked at the district in prior years. In closing, Mount Clemens has a brand problem. When most people discuss Mount Clemens, they don't have good things to say, or they have heard how bad it is. I am asking for all hands on deck to turn the ship around. We need to be speaking about the amazing things, like the construction vacation coming up, that the district is working on, and also the enrollment. And we need to work with Mr. Roper to get that enrollment up. We can't go back and correct all the things that have happened in the past. We can only make sure we are continuing, continually doing the right thing, and improving the brand each and every day. I envision the day that the district is full, and that there are people who look forward to bringing their children into this district, and this great city. As I had stated to somebody yesterday, when I was speaking with them, the main reason that I do solo real estate is because my name is very important to me, and I don't want anybody to destroy my brand. We should hold that same esteem to the name, the Mount Clemens Public Schools, and the city of Mount Clemens. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kahoon. Mr. Walker.
Congratulations on your first official, regular meeting. And officially meeting the community yesterday, might've been a little brash, but you know, we still fight a good fight, together as one, as this great community. And I think that once we, as a community, everyone, stakeholders, our district, meet, have tough conversations, and actually get to the root of actually helping the children in this district, then we can make this district better. I think that's what we're lacking, and been lacking, and feel like we're on a great path forward with Mr. Roper, and that we can actually do that. It's great to see these, the door-to-door campaign. I know I'll be talking to you about that, because that's very exciting, one of the things I enjoy, actually, especially during campaign season. And hearing from residents and their past friends about the district, what we can do to make our district better. And I think also to the teachers who are contemplating leaving the district, Mr. Roper is very honest, he has an open door, you can go talk to him about anything, and I think that holds true. You might not like everything that Mr. Roper may do, you might disagree, but it's always gonna be for the benefit of the kids in this district, and that's what truly matters. And just looking forward to next month's meeting, and getting to the start of the school year, so we can start off on a good foot.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Ms. Walker.
Well, welcome to Mr. Roper again, your first official meeting. We're thrilled to have you here. I love the new, a new standard of excellence, the brand, and I love your idea for reaching out and increasing our enrollment. The other comment is, and I know everybody here has heard it a million times, we sit behind the table, and there's some things we're privy to that we can't comment on, and we hear it from all sides, but one thing you have to know, there's nobody behind this table who does not love our kids, love our district, and love our teachers, and love our residents who've been here a long time, and have taught and worked behind these walls. That's one thing we all have in common, is the welfare of our kids, and our teachers, and our staff, and that we make this district great. And we know we can do it, but it is the one common ground we're all on. Everyone in this room loves our kids, and I think we just have to keep that in mind. Those are my comments tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Dr. McFadden.
Thank you, sir. I got a lot to talk about. That's not like me, it's out of character.
Not so much.
I will never exploit, expose, humiliate, or divulge any professional or personal information, but do believe I take all those characteristics in reference to the operation of this district. I do not hold grudges, or pass views, and have always been transparent. I say that because, moving forward, I just wanna make sure everybody know where I stand on that. I don't give out information, on individuals in the district, personal, professional, because I wanna make sure that everybody has their honor and integrity intact. If I was to fight an enemy in the field, and I was to kill him, I'd give him an honorable burial. So with that being said, even if you are my enemy, I would do and hold you highly. But I will not discriminate, or exploit, or expose, or humiliate anybody in this district or whatever. Now, I'm gonna bring up some other questions, is I'm glad to hear the city would allow a partnership. A strong city needs a strong district. If either is weak, both is weak. So for branding, city and school branding is very important, because if the city is bad, the school is bad. If the district is bad, the city is bad. So I'm glad to see that's gonna be a relationship. Earlier, we talked about, or we heard of relationships with policy number 9,000, relationships when the board comments, such as the city has a part in their agenda in the beginning and the end. They give three minutes for public relations or public comments, and two minutes at the end for public comments. Those are not a response. It's a response from the comment, and sometimes somebody speaks on it, but usually, a lot of the questions that comes to the board, we need to have time to research, evaluate, and give the correct response. Administrative guidelines point those out for the superintendent, so usually, the next following meeting that is presented. So that's policy number 9,000 is the series. Policy number 9120 and 9130 will speak to that. And also, policy series 5,000 of students will speak to the dress and grooming code of policy 5511. Mr. Roper, thank you for your heads up. I know we got a lot of work to do. I know we got some good people on this board. Everyone at this board, I know they have tenacity. I know you have gumph. I know you're ready to get ready and get the things done. Like Little Caesar would say, Little Caesar's piece of pizza, I know you're hot, I know you're ready. But, Mr. President, those are my comments.
Thank you, sir.
I'll get that on the shirt.
I think that's already a brand.
Right, right. I'm just gonna get it branded.
Here it is, mid-July, and I encourage the students, the staff, the faculty that aren't currently working to enjoy the break, because before you know it, we'll be at the back-to-school bash, and summer will be just a memory, and we'll be moving forward into this 2023, 2024 school year. There was a comment tonight regarding uniforms. I've been at this table a long time. This board and other boards have discussed uniforms. There were pros and cons for both sides of the situation. I do recall, maybe 15, 20 years ago, we did have uniform dressing, meaning that all the students wore dark pants, or dark skirts, or anything like that, and a light shirt. It was a voluntary program. One of our programs, I think it was, let's see, what was her name? Can't call her name right now. She was the principal at Seminole. She was very successful with the uniform dressing at her building. There was, when it came to public comments, when we were talking about that, again, it was, some people didn't like the idea of a uniform, other people did like the idea of the uniform. So the district split it in the middle and went with a uniform dressing. I can recall times that we've had actual uniform companies come in and give a presentation of their wear and the cost of their wear. So this is not anything new that has come before the board, it just resurfaces and comes back at a different time and a different place. If it's something that should be studied, I believe that that's the building administrator that should survey their population, the parents that go to, attend those particular facilities, and get a grasp of what the parents of those students that go, that are in those buildings, what the parents would like to do regarding that, and that would give us some information and some data at this table to determine how we would move forward in that initiative. To my colleagues at the board table, and to the public, I acknowledge and take responsibility for the letter, and I apologize for not copying my colleagues on the board to my response, my letter to, of response to an inquiry. Those are my comments. Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Member Walker.
Support.
Seconded by Member Walker. Call or roll, please.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Kahoon?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes. Motion carries. Meeting's adjourned at 7:38 PM.